September 3rd, 2015. We'll call members Mike Iner, Chair John Kelly, and Steve Rhodes, Vice Chair Rebecca Hanson, Steve Whitman, all in it, and Bill Bolton, the Selectments Representative. Public comments unrelated to the agenda? Can I have one?
Sure.
I'm Frank McLean from Happy Valley Habitat Humanity. And we're looking to lease a spot on Tenny Mountain Highway in the former Lakes Region Community Services building to relocate our retail store, which is the Restore is the name. It's in Alderney. I don't know if everyone's familiar with.
Yeah.
So we're down there and that's where the affiliate office is. And we own that space, which has been provided to us by Alex Ray graciously. We pay rent there. We're looking to relocate up to that building, which is owned by AutoServe Paul Goddard. So this is my first foray into planning board, you know, lease, commercial leases in a high-profile area, so bear with me if you don't mind. I had spoken with Mrs. Penny, Town Planner, yesterday just to get my feet wet with what needed to be done and found out that we had missed the deadline for this upcoming scheduled board meeting this Thursday. And just, I was here to kind of see if there was any options that might be available to us to move it along, to help us save some money with rent at our current location and allow us to get into the next location and begin.
One second. When was the deadline?
August 25th.
August 25th.
It was a week ago, Thursday.
Okay, go ahead Frank, sorry.
Sure. One of the things that I spoke with Mr. Penny about was in the application it had indicated, it's been changed now, but it then indicated that it was 15 days before the next scheduled meeting is when the application was due. And I called and I understand fully it seemed to just be an error in the form. She said it hadn't been updated in a long time, but we're trying, we're hoping to get it in on that day to have it ready for the next scheduled meeting. The hope was, again, to allow us to save some money on our rent going into November. So if we were able to get a hearing or at least get our application reviewed before then, maybe on the next work session, that might be an option. And then we would be able to not incur that other expense of November's full rent at our past location. The whole idea is we have a lot of volunteers that have kind of scheduled themselves in to be able to help us rehab the insides of the new location with painting and cleaning and whatnot. So we're trying to accommodate that with what we had anticipated going into the two-week scheduling conflict there that I was unaware of the extra time needed for the advertising that the public notices, which she, you know, I understand fully. Just kind of want to know what options we might have to try to expedite us being able to move in. Again, you know, we're nonprofit, we're building houses locally, we have two active mortgages in Plymouth that we handle right now. And, you know, we're just trying to grow with the need of the community and make ourselves a little bit more visible on Tenny Mountain. A lot of people, I don't think, even realize that we have an affiliate location in this area of services. We service 14 local towns right now. So it's a big, that location is pretty visible for us. So it would be great to be in there sooner and catch some of the leaf peeping traffic that would be going through.
So right now that building has been empty for over a year?
Yeah.
What you said. And he's paying property taxes and there's a chance he could get you guys in as a renter?
Yeah.
So it'd still be on the tax roll. It's not that it's going off or anything. So the question is, is there anything that the board could do to help them not have to wait till the third week in October, when you were hoping to get in the third week of September, correct?
On the meeting, yeah, for the review of the application.
But you didn't get the application in on time because there was a confusion on when your application had to be in.
Right.
Does the board have any questions or have any comments or?
Is this kind of unique or has this been addressed in the past or?
Well, I need to speak to this. This is a bit of a Solomon-like decision here. I will grant that the actual copy that Mr. McLean got happened to be one out there with some erroneous information. However, I believe that Brian Murphy, you called Brian Murphy?
The Building Inspector.
Our Building Inspector some time ago and he told you, told you to meet what you did the other, yesterday.
It was the day of, yeah.
Right. So, I mean, a large portion of this snafu here. There's your sign. I can't start the process till I have.
It's in a commercial agricultural zoning. And they're both basically retail sales. So I don't understand why he's even here.
No, no, commercial says a product, I don't have the zoning book with me, it's more specific. It's a service rather than a thing that you're selling. And they're selling things, so that makes it retail sales.
And it's also been vacant for over a year, which triggers coming to the planning board.
Right.
So the question is whether the planning board would be willing, for this extenuating circumstance of Habitat Humanity and volunteers helping, whether we'd be willing to have a public hearing. If he can make the deadline, get the paperwork in, not have to rely on Ms. Penny to do everything for you, whether we'd be willing to have a public hearing on the 1st of October for our work session meeting.
What's the deadline? What would the deadline be, Sharon, that you'd have to meet?
Well, Mr. McLean's meeting with me next Thursday, the 10th, and I've got to hold, the application has to be in by the 16th of this month. So the ad can go out to the newspaper. I mean, I've got a butter notices, the application has to go out to you folks. It's the process again, so it'll essentially, it will make more work. But that's okay if you consider the circumstances extenuating. But I have to have a complete application in my hand by September 16th, which is a Wednesday, so that's just about two weeks from now.
And my feeling has always been, let's make the planner's job easier, not harder.
Well, it's not about easier, it's just not. I just take.
I don't know how many times I've said that over the last eight or so years.
That's another question. Do you have anybody helping you fill out this application and meet the requirements?
Yeah, so I'm meeting with Ms. Penny on Thursday.
Yeah.
At 2:00. And we're going to go over it. I'm going to do as much as I can previous to that without doing it completely wrong. And reviewing it, there's a lot of things in here that I.
Records are what they are. We'll take a look when we're here, but one would hope so, but sometimes the records are pretty full of holes.
And then, so that plot plan, we can discuss it more, but we can make, we'll make, this is my utmost attention right now. So this is our priority, this is what I'm focused on, developing. So the next two weeks are going to be, it's going to be well.
Dimensions and floor layouts, because you have to look at parking spaces and, you know, and then your code issues about bathrooms and this and that. So it's a little bit of work.
Any questions from the board or a motion?
This is your, I'll just shoot this down. That's your bylaws at the bottom.
That gives us the permission to do it, okay.
Do you want to read that perhaps?
The chairman may add, change, or cancel any meeting by majority poll of the planning board by unanimous amendment. Business meetings to act upon applications and other business will be held on the 3rd Thursday of each month. These meetings are intended to conclude at 10:00 PM. Work sessions we have on the 1st Thursday of the month beginning at 6:30. The board show, conduct site visits as required.
I mean, our attorney, way back in the day when we were having problematic issues with certain projects, mostly clerical or whatever, our attorney said it is absolutely the board's prerogative by majority vote to convene a public hearing as long as all the proper notifications are in via the RSA's, because it is a public hearing. So there's no impediment to this.
And it looks like that if we can get this done on the 15th, he'd have two weeks in order to get all this painting and everything ready so he can be in, so he's not paying for another month at the site where you're at.
That's exactly, yes. And actually, you know, Paul has graciously let us get in there and like start cleaning windows and stuff like that to just, you know, kind of excite the program along.
It'd be nice to get a vacant building in Plymouth filled.
You just, you just might want to, in your motion, this is just a suggestion just crafted so that, you know, there are some extenuating circumstances, because otherwise everyone could be coming insane. And then what do you do?
Do extra homework or we have to, you know, be willing to do it at a different meeting to help meet the needs of an applicant. And here's a case, I think you've made a couple of good points, where we could help nonprofit locate in town and use an existing vacant building if they can get everything in on time and be, you know, self-sufficient. I would totally support doing that.
I'm just suggesting this because you want this as your rationale if there's pushback from other parties. You know the drill. Yes, yeah.
You sound like you almost had it, but.
I'm an alternate.
Oh, and by the way, Steve would be a voting member tonight.
Oh, that's.
Boom. Well, there's also going to be an economic hardship, you know, should he not be able to go forward around in that timeframe, so.
We've heard that time and time.
Yeah, that's true. Yeah, that's true.
As long as the building stays on the tax roll, I really don't care.
We knew that, Joe. We knew that. Even Tara knows that.
The only three new businesses we've got are all nonprofits. Great growth in Plymouth.
I make a motion that we convene a public hearing on our work session meeting on October 1st because of the nature of the business being a nonprofit.
I would say that we put it back on the bogus paperwork that was out there, because that's a clear.
Yes and no. Yes and no.
But it's something you can point to. I mean, there really are no other.
Let's blame the paperwork?
Yeah. Well, there are no other extenuating circumstances, really.
That would let anybody else who has the old copy use the same one.
Tucked in a drawer from 1992.
So the extenuating circumstance of a nonprofit lay, no, she can't really say layperson, nonprofit nature of the business and, that's my motion. That's my motion. We could take a second and improve it if we needed to, and I'd be willing to.
You could reiterate it so I can get it. Or it doesn't have to be overly verbose.
Yeah, I work better than you.
Can we use this as a special exception so the next guy who walks in through the door doesn't say, "Well, you know, he did it, now I can do it."
We don't want to make Sharon's job.
More difficult than it already is.
I'd like that in the vote, that this is a special exception for this one particular thing.
That's why you have the extenuating circumstances.
That's the phraseology I would like to see as extenuating.
Did I say that yet? No. Did I? I can't, I do not. Extenuating circumstances in the nature of the business. So if there's a second.
Sure.
Bill Bolton seconds it. Any discussion before we vote? All those in favor of allowing the applicant to put an application together for our October 1st work session meeting signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Seeing none? Do your best to get everything done that you can, make it as easy as you can on Sharon. That'd be great.
That's the last thing we want to do, is be in the kind of encouragement on that, because this is going to be a big help to us with.
Sure. Well, yes, we're going to meet Thursday. You'll feel a little more comfortable on Thursday, but like I said, you know, I got to be mom.
Yeah.
When I say I need this, I go get cocktail napkins.
So give whatever extra help that you need. Thanks Frank.
Guys, have a great day.
All right.
Okay, that brings us to administrative matters. Approval of June 4th, 2015 minutes.
Good night. I'll make a motion to approve the minutes as written.
Second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Unfinished and other business, master plan, crafting of the community survey and other master plan review continuation with Tara Banford and CC Consultant Planner.
Thank you.
Bill, were you responsible for getting this?
I guess so. I'll take the hit.
I copied it.
It's Sharon's fault.
Is he a politician or what?
So I have a first draft to talk about. Before we get in the nitpicky of it, I want to kind of give an overview of what you have in front of me and how I get there. So how I start, right before I make your first draft, is reading your feedback with me and seeing what was kind of hanging out there that didn't really get acted on. The results of the visiting session, I won't hurt people or concern about everything that we've talked about and all the meetings I've come out. And I also look at some other surveys that others have done. If I don't look at my own, I'll never get, continue to learn and improve it. So that was my process. I want to kind of just quickly go through what's in there before we talk about the content. And then, there's one question in particular I think we should spend some time on. I think our goal tonight, besides gee, you left out something really important, or why you're asking this, should be to shorten it a little bit. This is more of a, he has everything I know that he knows in, but it's a little bit long right now in order to encourage people to.
That's key, because there's some people that.
What we did in the last, actually, what you have on the contract is double-sided, one legal side sheet. It doesn't have to be that. It could be, you need two, two-sided, eight and F by 11. So, but right now it's three double-sided, eight by 11. So that's probably about eight questions, maybe a little bit less. I can make some more shortening with formatting, but, so just kind of think about as we go through, what might you not really need, that I have here. So, and so I'll just give an overview of what we have and then we'll talk through it. We talked some about trying to get at who they are and what they're thinking, what their relationship to the town is, and that's really the first four questions. We talked about finding out where are people by what? What do they leave town for versus where they go to downtown or Tenny Mountain? So that's, that's the next question, that's question five. And don't worry about the order or formatting, this is just a really part of the. The next two questions are kind of where do people think development should occur? And then number eight kind of gets at, you know, we've heard a lot about more mineral checks in and more natural resource checks in. That's really all in number eight as it relates to the zoning, because you really have very little mineral checks in the zoning right now. And all I see is the subtext from the two major rivers and the one pond. There's a lot more that can be done in there. Next page, you get at some, hone down into some topics, type of agriculture, buying local, tourism, traffic in the downtown, parking in the downtown. And then kind of segue into transportation more on page four. And we want to kind of tie that to even what part of town you live in in terms of what we're thinking about. Where do people use, where do people use bicycles for transportation and what part of town they live in? That's where it is on here. It's all my train of thought when I'm doing the first draft, but it was necessarily. One of the things we heard at the visiting session was that people don't know what's going on at PSU, so I kind of see that. I like to ask what type of housing people might be in the future, if they're more feeling of us. So then I also ask what they live in now, if there's room, that might be helpful to see whether there's some transitioning going on. Number 22 is kind of the question I've heard the most at this table of concern about conversion of homes to student housing, so it's, we're even there articulating right now this draft. And then the age bracket again, so we can get an idea. We've asked him about priorities for the specific projects. And then the time should be fund conservation question, because it also has some back and forth about that. And then question 28 is pretty much everything I heard from Mike and Bill, all in one, all in one question, because they were my sounding boards for some questions, you know, about, okay, here's the general stuff, but I don't know really some of the specific things yet. So what, you know, what are some projects that might be part of people and what large expenditures are coming up? And I think we should really spend some time on question 28 and decide whether it works like that, are there things to take away from it, add to it. But I wanted, I wanted to do that in the context of who haven't seen everything, how it fits in, what else is here right now. So I suggest that we start with question 28 theory and then kind of go back to the reading and that idea. That's really, that's really a need I'm finding in priorities.
Can I say something before we jump in?
Sure.
So I, don't take offense, Bill. I looked at the Henniker survey and I made all these notes when I came in. I wrote, so what? Like for a lot of the questions, like really, so what? Like, so what if we know that? This is so much more, I think, dialed into Plymouth, this, like so far, just what we've seen, knowing that we can rearrange, as you said Tara, and that we might drop some questions out.
You need to drop some.
It's not our first master plan. Like, we know what some of the issues are, we have data, we can ask harder, more focused questions, so this is more.
You need questions that you can include answers to.
Exactly.
Not quantify the question.
So what question?
Well, within mind, within mind that everybody's busy and some people are intimidated by forms. Make this too long, a lot of you are just going to turn away. So, and then you're going to all be questioning, you know, we'll all be questioning the meaning, the lady, the responses.
Sure.
Response rate's too low. So you want to think about that and make sure that you include questions that you're going to use the answers to, right?
Right.
Not just because you're curious or not making that I can get some comfort or the census or something. What's going to, what are we going to use to then write the master plan and then steal what's in there? So that much. Question 28 is really the one that, as you saw, you know, there's a lot of different topics in here, but then we get, we want to get to the end, the idea would be, all right, now we can't do all those things in the other pages, because, you know, it's not going to happen financially. So what would your priorities be? And I tried to kind of pick out the things that sounded like the more intense of projects the town might be considering.
So we know we have some issues with South Main Street, North Main Street, with the constriction of the roadway. What information can we really get from the survey that would help us any more than what we already know?
And so I have that as number eight on 28. And just as a placeholder, and I, you know, assume that we do some wordsmithing in these, because this is just me kind of.
I know that 15 years ago or so, there was a plan to, wasn't there a plan or something to buy up some of the houses on South Main Street and?
What's to buy up?
South Main Street or you mean?
South, one side of, do you?
There was a plan to deal with the drainage and I think deal with some of the constriction. When June was the planner, there was a study that was done in South Main Street.
On South Main Street itself or?
South Main Street itself.
Wow, that was ambitious, wow.
Yeah, DOT was involved. But, and I don't remember some of the, you might be right, I don't remember some acquisitions.
It was more of a private, it was more of a private venture to buy a bunch of, have different people buying different buildings and it was very on the QT.
Yeah, now it's out there.
So I need, we need, you know, I need this group's input to word eight properly. It's really just a placeholder based on my limited knowledge of.
What are some of the options that we could do to improve South Main Street? We're talking about, are we talking about asking what they would think about parking on one side of the street versus two? Is that?
I don't think so. I think you're just putting.
That was your comment, okay.
I think you're just putting it on as, is it, in all these different things, is that a priority for you? I don't, I don't think this is the place to ask options. I think, I think this is the place to ask, should we spend some time and money identifying and weighing the options?
I go back on my old stump of, a lot of this has to do, you look down through these questions on 28, and the majority of them are downtown or South Main Street. It has nothing to do with Tenny Mountain Highway, has nothing to do with any fairgrounds, roads, maybe trying to get new commercial up there. This is all downtown and it's all going to cost the town of Plymouth millions of dollars to do that. And I'm not too sure whether most of the people in Plymouth, other than the students, are just hanging on by their fingertips now, so I'm not too sure as to how much millions you're going to dump into South Main Street. And either end of Main Street is, it's closed in, so you're not going to go do anything more as far as extending South Main Street, not South Main Street and North Main Street. So I just, these things are wonderful, but I, the Tenny Mountain has always been the redheaded stepson and downtown has always been the glory, glory, that, and they continually pound away at downtown. And even though Tenny Mountain might get in some big box doors, it does mean employment for a lot of people that probably have improved their lifestyle a little bit. And, you know, on Tenny Mountain Highway, every time we turn around, we got to have the developer do all the work. They got to, they got to put in stop signs, they got to do everything like Walmart and everything like that, but downtown, we want the town to do it.
So maybe one of the questions we could craft that would see whether we need to put more emphasis on Tenny Mountain Highway, that's a good point, John. What are you thinking, Tara?
I'm here for you to add and take away from the list.
Less on downtown.
Less on downtown?
Yeah.
So I wonder if we could somehow?
And I just, I'm here for you to add and take away from the list and keep them on that we're not, we're just asking people to pick a few.
Right now.
But, but.
Right now when people park on South Main Street, they have to turn their side view mirrors in, and I don't know.
I know. I had a big semi-trail truck come by me and I was going to go into the community bank. I sat there and he went by me.
In fairness to John's point, you know, half of the, half of the items under 28 are about capital improvements like highway garage or recreation.
Yeah.
But there are three that are about downtown and we don't have one about Tenny?
Yeah.
And just at our last meeting, we heard about all the traffic stuff on Tenny Mountain.
And you have the Cora Plan, so what would the LA in one phrase to refer to implementing that plan?
Is there one recommendation that sticks out? No?
It was like 14 recommendations of that.
How would you summarize them to be able to add that to the list of implementing the plan when people aren't going to know it?
Maybe just acknowledging we have to address it, because they just have, they're just going to indicate three initiatives that they're behind.
So if we said like make improvements or infrastructure, what kind of improvements?
The problem you got, it's a state highway, and so you can't play around the state highway very much. And then the other road that goes in back of the stores, Route 3, would again, cost millions of dollars to do, so.
And we remember that 20 years ago when Bill Hull was, when Bill Hull was on the planning board trying to do something with Green Street.
Well, yeah, true, true. But I just think. But I just think that, number one, I think Smithbridge Road should have a stop, but I understand that.
We did a whole lot of work on Tenny Mountain Highway, I don't think any of us has to feel guilty that we're not...
Well, no, but instead, it's like the master plan. We did the Tenny Mountain Cora Plan, but can you remember what even the picture was, hardly, on the front page? Yeah, we did it, but it's back in the archives somewhere, we don't bring it up every time like we do downtown.
What if we just ask people what part of town they think needs the most improvement on traffic and parking? And give them a choice, downtown, Tenny Mountain Highway, Smith Road, bridge light, right? I mean, maybe we should be pounding on DOT to put a light in there. And, you know...
On a one to five basis, locate five different areas of concern that the planning board sees, and see what they rate that as five is the most concerned, we should, no?
It's a lot easier for people if you do it more like kick us through the most important rather than...
Okay, alright, so let's do that, so we can, can we pick out the area, Smith Bridge Road, South Main Street, North Main Street? Is there any other problem areas? And let them tell us.
See, the problem you have with South Main Street, North Main Street, or south of South Main Street, let's say it that way, it's a natural encroachment, where out on Tenny Mountain Highway, it's a man-made encroachment, in other words, they, if you put a stoplight there, you'd end it, right? You'd end a lot, lots and lots of problems with not a heck of a lot of expense. But you got a ledge in the river going south of Plymouth, and you got the railroad, the river, and on the northern path, so unless you take and get rid of a lot of the houses and stuff like that...
There's other things besides getting rid of the houses, I think, but...
But I think that you've got to consider the natural to the man-made problems.
For this one, can we just somehow consolidate A, G, and H, and let Tara figure out how best just to have maybe one, Tara, or two questions about downtown, and then have one about Tenny Mountain in general? Because they're weighing this against Safety Complex, and they're trying to find out where to spend money, as opposed to really dialing into a specific safety...
Exactly.
Generally, out of the survey, I'd say, oh, we need a new highway garage?
Well, that was, that was a dream years ago.
I mean, do we, I don't know.
How informed?
It's kind of on the bubble, you know, like, for the fact that DES is still allowing us to have a highway garage that allows salt and gas and oil spills to go into the river within the ESE. So, you know, DES at some point might say, you gotta move that.
Alright, so that's, so that's something, that's background of the question that would help me answer.
And building itself is rather antiquated.
You know, but I don't know, do we need a new highway garage? Do we need a new Safety Complex?
It's just the first work in draft, and these are placeholders for you to talk about, not, not...
Right, right, no, I understand, I just, it's the type of question.
Right. Oh, you could, if you want to ask about a highway garage or Safety Complex, you could have a couple sentence introduction to the issue, that's...
Because, yeah, if it's on there, and it says highway garage, who would say, like, you know, why do we need a new highway garage? I'm not, that's not my...
So we've got Smith Bridge, South Main Street, North Main Street, we leave a line for other...
We're in categories.
Well, I thought categories.
Well, the thing with that highway garage is the town of Plymouth already owns the land up near where the recycling center is. They own, I forget, it was bought...
It's like twenty acres or something.
Twenty acres or something like that. So, you know, you've got to consider, and consider that that money has already been spent, we lived with it. So now all you got to do is worry about the building, where if you build it somewhere else, you're gonna have to buy the land plus the building.
These are things that people just don't know about.
And that's another question, or at least a concern of mine, you pointed out the fact that we got twenty acres sitting up there, and we're thinking highway garage, you know, solar array, we got, you know, different, you know, we got the property and stuff, but we have properties all over the place, too. And what are we gonna do with all these fellow properties?
Yeah, but this introduces the subject, so then you can get to the next level of analysis, which is, oh, you know, for implementation, if you needed a new highway garage, whatever, oh, we've got these properties here, here, here. This is, this, once again, it's quantifying needs vis a vis taxes.
It's just gone here because I was told it was an issue.
Is there some way that we can be more general in nature, and just...
There's a lot of general questions on here.
Right, but these are very specific, and anytime you, anytime you stick that in your mind, it's gonna stick to you.
So I guess I'm just, and forgive me if I'm confused, but as far as the highway garage and the Safety Complex, how is that informing the master plan? For as far as, I mean, is that a, this might be a dumb question, I'm not sure, but is that a, is that a planning board issue, or is that a select board budget type thing for the future?
The master plan would be the place to address, and then the facilities that then the select board would implement. They're on here because when I got input from a couple of you that was on the list, if it's not really an issue, we take off. If it is really an issue, then we might want to separate them into different questions, and add a couple steps into it as a background. I think it took an idea to pull out the transportation-related questions.
Because they don't know the background.
Where you were going, but I was confused about your list, because you were saying Smith Bridge Road, North Main Street, South Main Street, but I thought we were saying we would add Tenny Mountain Highway.
I think you're thinking of looking at Smith Bridge intersection with Tenny Mountain.
Smith Bridge intersection, which is the...
Because I don't, I mean, I don't hear people talk about any other concern along North Main Street. I don't know if you...
Above the common?
Yeah. Above South Main Street.
Well, yeah, Central Main Street there is...
Right, yeah, I mean...
I think there probably could be a problem where these big trucks stop in the middle of the street.
Well, that's, that's the Central Main Street.
Yeah, it's part of a downtown district.
Is that also called postal or square, or is that...
No, no, that's, no, that's right, that is a little hoop up around them, for the post office.
But it seems like we could say, Tenny Mountain Highway including Smith Bridge in a section, North Main Street including...
The common.
Describe that in a section, and South Main Street including the bottleneck created by the on-street parking.
Yeah.
And so those are really the big things, because they might just feel, what do they mean about that? What's the problem?
Could we put anything like, that the businesses on South Main Street have to supply adequate parking?
And you're gonna see...
You're kind of screwing them up.
You're gonna see a monograph, because this is just how we get, you know, just wants to...
Hey, that's what they do on Tenny Mountain Highway.
Yeah, but it's common in every town, it's common in every downtown, it's different.
The zoning is different downtown versus Tenny Mountain Highway.
I understand.
You're still seeing new facts of the segue of one hundred percent automobile transportation from the railroads.
Absolutely.
The planning board has a good idea, pulling out there, to get it talked about.
Is this a good idea?
To study it.
I'll wait until I fill out my survey.
It was shot down years ago because of the residents of Main Street, but now Main Street's turned all into college and rental, so you might have a chance at it now.
So how, how I would normally handle something like the highway garage or Safety Complex, would be, here's a sentence with the background, and then here are some options for addressing the need, and ask if they would support. So maybe, I mean, maybe that's something that...
There again...
I'm gonna have, I'm gonna have the board members go a little bit more through the, through the chair, please, so we can get through this. Go ahead, Tara.
Would it make sense for Bill to send me some wording to make C and D separate questions, with an introduction, and then here are some options for addressing the need, which one would you support? That's, I mean, they really were just thought stakeholders.
Yeah, and, you know, there could have been a little bit more talk between Bill and I, and you possibly, maybe we should meet between now, between this meeting, and the next time you come back, if we could find a time, I think that would help, too.
Yeah, I've got, I gotta be out of town, end of September, but...
Because I could see this going till tomorrow, this morning.
This is the hardest one, I'm sorry we're just starting. We're gonna cross-tab if a lot of the answers...
That's where it gets interesting.
To keep that...
So one is important is too important. How long they've been implemented, are we really gonna use that?
I think so, because Plymouth has changed.
Okay.
I think that quantifies the chronology of things.
It will tell you who's engaged in the survey, and if we just hear from long-term residents, and we don't hear from new folks, it just informs us, it's another cross-tab.
And number three, I think we talked about at the last meeting, the idea that that counts the last meeting, because you all were saying that a lot of people just pass the town, whether they're, you know, residents at the hospital, or students, or, you know, there's kind of a chance to see if there's any difference in how people feel about things based on whether they...
There's your sign, I can't start the process till I have...
It's in the commercial agricultural zoning, and they're both basically retail sales. So I don't understand why he's even here.
No, no, commercial, commercial says a product, I don't have the zoning book with me, it's more specific, it's a service rather than a thing that you're selling, and they're selling things, so that makes it retail sales.
And it's also been vacant for over a year, which triggers coming to the planning board. So the question is whether the planning board would be willing, for this extenuating circumstance of Habitat Humanity and volunteers helping, whether we'd be willing to have a public hearing, if he can make the deadline, get the paperwork in, not have to rely on Ms. Penny to do everything for you, whether we'd be willing to have a public hearing on the first of October for our work session meeting.
It's the deadline. What would the deadline be, Sharon, that you'd have to meet?
Mr. McLean's meeting with me next Thursday, the 10th, and I've got to hold, the application has to be in by the 16th of this month, so the ad can go out to the newspaper, I mean, I've got a butter notices, the application has to go out to you folks, it's the process again, so it'll, it'll essentially, it will make more work, but that's okay, if you consider the circumstances extenuating. But I have to have a complete application in my hand by September 16th, which is a Wednesday, so that's, that's just about two weeks from now.
And my feeling has always been, let's make the planner's job easier, not harder.
Well, it's not about easier, it's just not...
Kuku.
I just take...
I don't know how many times I've said that over the last eight or so years.
Ask him a question.
I'd like to have a...
Do you have anybody helping you fill out this application and meet the requirements?
Yeah, so I'm meeting with Ms. Penny on Thursday, at two o'clock, and we're gonna go over, and I'm gonna do as much as I can previous to that, without doing it completely wrong, and in reviewing it, there's a lot of things in here that I...
Records are what they are, we'll take a look when we're here, but one would hope so, but sometimes the records are pretty full of holes.
And then, so that clock plan, we can discuss it more, but we can make, we'll make, this is my utmost attention right now, so this is our priority, this is what I'm focused on developing, so the next two weeks are gonna be, it's gonna be well...
Right, well, the dimensions and floor layouts, because you have to look at parking spaces, and, you know, and then your code issues about bathrooms and this and that, and so it's a little bit of work, yeah.
Any questions from the board, or a motion?
This is your, I'll just shoot the stamp, you'll see, that's your bylaws at the bottom.
That gives us the permission to do it, okay.
Do you want to read that, perhaps?
The chairman may add, change, or cancel any meeting by majority poll of the planning board by unanimous amendment. Business meetings to act upon applications, and other business will be held on the third Thursday of each month. These meetings are intended to conclude at 10:00 PM. Work sessions will be held on the first Thursday of the month, beginning at 6:30. The board shall conduct site visits as required.
I mean, our attorney, way back in the day when we were having problematic issues with certain projects, mostly clerical or whatever, our attorney said that it is absolutely the board's prerogative by majority vote to convene a public hearing, as long as all the proper notifications are in via the RSAs, because it is a public hearing. So there's no impediment to this.
And it looks like that if we can get this done on the 15th, he'd have two weeks in order to get all this painting and everything ready so he can be in, so he's not paying for another month at the site where you're at, is that...
That's exactly, yes, and actually, you know, Paul has graciously let us get in there, like, start cleaning windows and stuff like that, to just, you know, how to excite the program along.
It'd be nice to get a vacant building in Plymouth filled.
You just, you just might want to, in your motion, this is just a suggestion, just crafted so that, you know, there are some extenuating circumstances, because otherwise, everyone could be coming in saying, and then what do you do?
Do extra homework, or we have to, you know, be willing to do it at a different meeting to help meet the needs of an applicant. And here's a case, I think you've made a couple good points, where we could help nonprofit locate in town and use an existing vacant building, if they can get everything in on time and be, you know, self-sufficient. I would totally support doing that.
I'm just suggesting this because you want this as your rationale if there's pushback from other parties, you know the drill.
You sound like you almost had it, but...
I'm an alternate.
Oh, and by the way, Steve would be a voting member tonight.
Oh, that's...
Boom. Well, there's also gonna be an economic hardship, you know, should he not be able to go forward in that timeframe, so...
We've heard that time and time.
Yeah, that's true, yeah, that's true.
As long as the building stays on the tax row, I really don't care.
We knew that, John. We knew that. Even Tara knows that.
The only three new businesses we've got are all nonprofits.
Great growth in Plymouth. I make a motion that...
Convene a public hearing.
That we convene a public hearing on our work session meeting on October 1st, because of the nature of the business being a nonprofit...
I would say that we put it back on the bogus paperwork that was out there, because that's a clear...
Yes and no. Yes and no.
But it's something you can point to, I mean, there really are no other...
Let's blank the paperwork, okay?
Well, there are no other extenuating circumstances, really.
That would let anybody else who has the old copy, use the same...
Tucked in a drawer from nineteen ninety-two.
So the extenuating circumstance of a nonprofit lay, no, you can't really say layperson, nonprofit nature of the business and...
That's insurance.
That's my motion. We could take a second and improve it if we needed to, and I'd be willing to...
You could reiterate it so I can get it, or it doesn't have to be overly verbose.
Yeah, I work better in the morning.
Can we, can we use this as a special exception, so the next guy who walks in through the door doesn't say, well, you know, he did it, now I can do it?
We don't want to make Sharon's job...
No.
More difficult than it already is.
I'd like that in the vote, that this is a special exception for this one particular thing.
That's why you have the extenuating circumstances.
That's, that's the phraseology, I would like to see it's extenuating.
Did I say that yet? No. Did I, I can't, I do not. Extenuating circumstances in the nature of the business, so if there's a second...
Sure.
Bill Bolton seconds it. Any discussion before we vote? All those in favor of allowing the applicant to put an application together for our October 1st work session meeting, signify by saying aye. Any opposed? Seeing none? Do your best to get everything done that you can, make it as easy as you can on Sharon, that'd be great.
That's the last thing we want to do, is be in the kind of encouragement on that, because it's gonna be a big help to us with the...
Sure, well, yes, we're gonna meet Thursday, you'll feel a little more comfortable on Thursday, but like I said, you know, I gotta be mom. When I say I need this, I go get cocktail napkins.
So give whatever back, you know, extra help that you need. Thanks, Ryan.
Alright, thanks.
Okay, that brings us to administrative matters, approval for June 4th, 2015 minutes.
Good night. I'll make a motion to approve the minutes as written.
Second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Unfinished and other business, master plan, crafting of the community survey and other master plan review, continuation with Tara Banford, NCC consultant planner. Unfinished, another business, master plan, crafting of the community survey and other master plan review continuation with Tara Banford and CC Consultant Planner.
Thank you.
Bill, were you responsible for getting this?
Um, I guess so. I'll take the hit.
I copied it.
Is he a politician or what?
So I have a first draft to talk about. Before we get in the nitpicky of it, I want to kind of give an overview, of what you have in front of me and how, I guess, yeah. So, how I start, right before I make your first draft, is reading your people's attachment and seeing what was kind of hanging out there that didn't really get acted on. The results of the visiting session, I won't encourage people are concerned about everything that we've talked about at all meetings of somehow, and I also look at some other surveys that others have done. If I don't look at my own, I'll never get, continue to learn and improve it. So, so that was my process. I want to kind of just quickly go through what's in there before we talk about the content. And then, there's one question in particular, I think we should spend some time on. I think our goal tonight with signs, gee, you left out something really important, or why are you asking this, to be to shorten it a little bit. This is more of a, here's everything I cannot put that keynote in, but it's a little bit long right now. If you want to encourage people to
That's key, because there's some people that
What we did in the mind is, actually, what you have on the contract is double-sided and one legal side sheet. It doesn't have to be that, it could be maybe two, two-sided, eight and F by 11, so but right now it's three double-sided, so that's probably about eight questions. Maybe a little bit less, I can make some more shortening of formatting, but, so just kind of think about it as we go through what might you not really need, that I have here, so, and so I'll just give an overview of what we have. We talked some about trying to get at who, who they are and what they're thinking, what their relationship to the town is, and that's really the first four questions. We talked about finding out where are people by what, what do they leave town for versus where, they go to downtown or Tenny Mountain? So that's, that's the next question, that's question five. And don't worry about the order or formatting, this is just a really important thing. The next two questions are kind of weird, if people think development should occur. And then number eight kind of gets it. You know, we heard a lot about more environmental checks in and more environmental protection, that's really all in number eight as it relates to the building. Because you really have very little environmental checks in the county right now, and all I see is the the subacts from the two major rivers on the Long Pond. There's a lot more that can be done in there. Next page, you get at some, hone down into some topics, type of agriculture, buying local, tourism, traffic in the downtown, parking in the downtown. And then kind of segue into transportation more on page four. And we want to kind of tie that to, meaning what part of town people live in, in terms of, we're thinking about where do people use, where do people use bicycles for transportation, and what part of town they live in. That's what weird it is on here, it's all my train of thought while I'm doing the first draft, but it was necessary. One of the things we heard at the visiting session was that people don't know what's going on at PESU, so I kind of see that. I'd like to ask what type of housing do you imagine in the future, is that what you're feeling about? So then I also ask what they live in now, if there's room, that might be helpful to see whether there's some transitioning going on. Number 22 is kind of the question I've heard the most at this table of concern about conversion of homes to student housing, so we're even not articulating right now in this draft. And then, age bracket again, so we can get an idea of the asking about priorities for a specific project. And then the time should be fun conservation question, because it also has some back and forth about that. And then question 28 is pretty much everything I heard from Mike and Bill, all in one, all in one question, because they were my sounding boards for some questions. You know, about, okay, here's the general stuff, but I don't know really some of the specific things yet, so what, you know, what are some projects that might be part of people, and what, what large expenditures are coming up? And I think we should really spend some time on question 28, and decide whether it works like that, are there things to take away from it, add to it? But I wanted, I wanted to do that in the context of who haven't seen everything, how it fits in, what, what else is here right now, so so I suggest that we start at question 28 here, and then kind of go back to reading that idea. That's really, that's really a meat of it. Finding the priorities.
Can I say something before we jump in?
Sure.
So I, don't take offense, Bill, I looked at the Henniker survey, and I made all these notes when I came in, I wrote, so what? Like, for a lot of the questions, like, really, so what, like, so what if we know that? This is so much more, I think, dialed into Plymouth, this, like, so far, just what we've seen, knowing that we can rearrange, as you said, Tara, and that we might drop some questions out.
Yeah, we need to, you need to drop some
It's not our first master plan, like, we know what some of the issues are, we have data, we can ask harder, more focused questions, so
People are going to look at this right now and be
You need questions that you can input answers to, not quantify the question.
So what question?
We do.
Well, within mind, within mind that everybody's busy, and some people are intimidated by forms. Make this too long, a law will just going to turn away, so, and then you're going to all be questioning, you know, we'll all be questioning the meeting, the lady, the responses.
Sure.
Responses too long, so, so you want to think about that and make sure that you include questions that you're going to use the answers to, right?
Right.
Not just because you're curious, or not making it that I can get concord or the census or something. What, what's gonna, what are we going to use to then write the master plan and then steal what's in there, so that might 28 is really the, the one that, as you saw, you know, there's a lot of different topics in here, but then we get, we want to get to the end, the idea would be, all right, now we can't do all those things in the other pages, because, you know, it's not going to have financials. So what would your priorities be, and I tried to kind of pick out the things that sounded like the more force intensive projects the town might be considering.
So we know we have some issues with South Main Street, North Main Street, with the constriction of, of the roadway. What information can we really get from the survey that would help us any more than what we already know?
And so I have that as number eight on 28, and just as a placeholder, and I, you know, assume that we do some wordsmithing in these, because this is the same kind of
I know that 15 years ago or so, there was a plan to, wasn't there a plan or something to buy up some of the houses on South Main Street?
Was to buy up the
South Main Street, or you mean?
South, one side of, do you?
There was a plan to deal with the drainage, and I think deal with some of the construction, when June was the planner, there was a study that was done in South Main Street.
On South Main Street itself, or
South Main Street itself.
Wow, that was ambitious, wow.
Yeah, DOT was involved, but, and I don't remember some of the, you might be right, I don't remember
It was more of a private, it was more of a private venture to buy a bunch, have different people buying different buildings, and it was very on the QT.
Yeah, now it's out there.
So I need, we need, you know, I need this group's input to word eight properly, it's really just a placeholder based on my limited knowledge of the
What are some of the options that we could do to improve South Main Street? We're talking about, are we talking about asking what they would think about parking on one side of the street versus two, is that?
I don't think so, I think you're, I think you're just putting
That was your comment, okay.
Yeah.
I think you're just putting it on as, is it, in all these different things, is that a priority for people? I don't, I don't think this is the place to ask options, I think, I think this is the place to ask, should we spend some time and money identifying and weighing the options?
I go back on my old stump of, a lot of this has to do, you look down through these questions on 28, and the majority of them are downtown or South Main Street. That has nothing to do with Tenny Mountain Highway, has nothing to do with any fairgrounds roads, maybe trying to get new commercial up there. This is all downtown, and it's all going to cost the town of Plymouth millions of dollars to do that. And I'm not too sure whether most of the people in Plymouth, other than the students, are just hanging on by their fingertips now, so I'm not too sure as to how much millions you're going to dump into South Main Street. And either end of Main Street is, is, it's, it's closed in, so you're not going to go do anything more as far as extending South Main Street, and the South Main Street and North Main Street. So I just, these things are wonderful, but I, the, the Tenny Mountain has always been the redheaded stepson, and downtown has always been the glory, glory, that, and they, they continually pound away at, at downtown. And even though Tenny Mountain might get in some big box stores, it does mean employment for a lot of people that probably have improved their lifestyle a little bit, and, you know, on Tenny Mountain Highway, every time we turn around, we got to have the developer do all the work, they got to, they got to put in stop signs, they got to do everything like Walmart and everything like that, but downtown, we want the town to do
So maybe one of the questions we could craft that would see whether we need to put more emphasis on Tenny Mountain Highway, we, that's a good point, John. What are you thinking, Tara?
I'm here for you to add and take away from the list.
Or less, less on downtown.
Less on downtown?
Yeah.
So what if we could somehow?
And I just, I'm here for you to add and take away from the list, and keep them on that we're, we're not, we're just asking people to pick a few
Right now But, but Right now, when people park on South Main Street, they have to turn their side view mirrors in, and I don't know.
I had a big semi trailer truck come by me, and I was going to go into the community bank, I sat there and he went by me.
In fairness to John's point, you know, half of the, half of the items under 28 are about capital improvements like highway garage or recreation.
Yeah, some
But there are three that are about downtown, and we don't have one about Tenny, and just at our last meeting, we heard about all the traffic stuff on Tenny Mountain.
And, and you have the
The corridor.
The corridor plan, so, so what would DOA in one phrase to refer to implementing that plan?
Is there one recommendation that sticks out, no?
Like 14 recommendations of that.
How would you summarize them to be able to add that to the list of, of implementing the plan when people aren't going to know it?
Maybe just acknowledging we have to address it, because they just have, they're just going to indicate three initiatives that they're behind.
So if we said, like, make improvements or infrastructure, what kind of improvements?
The problem you got, it's a state highway, and so you can't play around with the state highway very much. And then the other road that goes in back of the stores, Route 3, would, again, cost millions of dollars to do, so
And we remember that 20 years ago when Bill Hull was, when Bill Hull was on the planning board, trying to do something with Green Street.
Well, yeah, true, true, but I, I just think that number one, I think Smithbridge Road should, should have a stop, but I understand that.
We did a whole lot of work on Tenny Mountain Highway, I don't think any of us has to feel guilty that we're not
Well, no, but instead, it's like the master plan, we did the Tenny Mountain Corridor plan. But can you remember what even the picture was hardly on the front page? Yeah, we did it, but it's back in the archives somewhere, we don't bring it up every time like we do downtown.
But what if we just asked people what part of town they think needs the most improvement on traffic and parking? And give them a choice, downtown, Tenny Mountain Highway, Smith Road, bridge light, right? I mean, maybe we should be pounding on DOT to put a light in there, and, you know
On a one to five basis, locate five different areas of concern that the planning board sees, and see what they rate that as five is the most concerned, we should, no?
It's, it's a lot easier for people if you do it more like kick them through the most important rather than
All right, so let's do that, so we can, can we pick out the, the area, Smith Bridge Road, South Main Street, North Main Street? Is there any other problem areas, and let them tell us?
See, the, the problem you have with South Main Street, North Main Street, or south of South Main Street, let's say it that way. It's a natural encroachment, where out on Tenny Mountain Highway, it's a, it's a man-made encroachment, in other words, they if you put a stoplight there, you'd end it, right? You'd end a lot of, lots and lots of problems with not a heck of a lot of expense. But you got a ledge in the river going south of Plymouth, and you got the railroad, the river, and, on, on, on the northern path, so unless you had to take and get rid of a lot of the houses and stuff like that.
There's other things besides getting rid of the houses, I think, but
But I, I think that you've got to consider the natural to the man-made problems.
For this one, can we just somehow consolidate A, G, and H? And let Tara figure out how best, just to have maybe one, Tara, or two questions about downtown, and then have one about Tenny Mountain in general? Because they're weighing this against a safety complex, and they're trying to find out where to spend money, as opposed to really dialing into a specific safety
Exactly.
I'd say, oh, we need a new highway garage?
Well, that was, that was a dream years ago.
I mean, do we, I don't know, do we?
It's kind of on the bubble, you know, like, for the fact that DES is still allowing us to have a highway garage that allows salt and gas and oil spills to go into the river, within the ESC. So, you know, DES at some point might say, you got to move that.
All right, so that's, so that's something, that's background of the question that would help
Building itself is rather antiquated.
But I don't know, do we need a new highway garage, do we need a new safety complex?
David, this is just the first work in draft, and these are placeholders for you to, for you to talk about, not, not
Right, right, no, I understand that, I just, the type of question.
Right, oh, you could, if, if you want to ask about a highway garage or safety complex, you could add a couple sentence introduction to the issue, that's
Because yeah, if it's on, I'm there, and it says highway garage, who, who would say, like, you know, why do we need a I'm not, that's not my
So we've got Smith Bridge, South Main Street, North Main Street, we leave a line for other
Categories.
Well, I thought categories.
Well, the thing with that highway garage is the town of Plymouth already owns the land up near where the recycling center is. They go own, I forget, it was bought
Twenty acres or something.
Twenty acres or something like that, so, you know, you've got to consider, and, and consider that that money has already been spent, we lived with it, so you're not, all you got to do is worry about the building. Where if you build it somewhere else, you're going to have to buy the land plus the building.
These are things that people just don't know about.
And that's another question, or at least concerning mine, you pointed out the fact that we've got 20 acres sitting up there, and we're thinking highway garage, you know, solar array, we got, you know, different you know, we got the property and stuff, but we have properties all over the place too. And what are we going to do with all these foul properties?
Yeah, but this, this introduces the subject, so then you could get to the next level of analysis, which is, oh, you know, for implementation, if you need a new highway garage or whatever, oh, we've got these properties here, we have, this is, this, once again, it's quantifying needs vis a vis taxes.
It's just one year because I was told it was an issue.
Is there some way that we, we can be more general in, in, in nature, and
There's a lot of general questions on here.
Right, but these are very specific, and anytime you, anytime you stick that in your mind, it's going to stick there.
So I guess I'm just, and forgive me if I'm confused, but as far as the highway garage and the safety complex, how is that? how is that informing the master plan? For as far as, I mean, is that a, this might be a dumb question, I'm not sure, but is that a, is that a planning board issue? Or is that a select board budget type thing for the future?
The master plan would be to place, address, and then facilities that then the select board would implement. They're on here because when I got input from a couple of you that was on the list, if it's not really an issue, we take off, if it is really an issue, then we might wanna separate them into different questions and add a couple steps into it as a background. I think it's a good idea to pull out the transportation related questions.
Because they don't know the background.
Where you were going, but I was confused about your list, because you were saying Smithbridge Road, North Main Street, South Main Street, but I thought we were saying we would add Tenny Mountain Highway.
I think you're thinking, looking at Smithbridge intersection with Tenny Mountain.
Smithbridge intersection, which is the.
Because I don't, I mean, I don't hear people talk about any other concern along North Main Street. I don't know if you.
Above the common?
Yeah. Above South Main Street.
Central Main Street there.
Right, yeah, I mean.
I think that probably could be a problem, where these big trucks stop in the middle of the street.
Well, that's, that's the central Main Street.
Yeah, it's part of a downtown district.
Is that also called post office, or is that?
No, no, that's, no, that's right, that is a little hoop up around the, for the post office.
But it seems like we could say, Tenny Mountain Highway including Smithbridge intersection, North Main Street including.
The common?
That intersection, and South Main Street including the bottom that created by the on-street parking.
Yeah.
Those are really the big things, because they might just feel, what do they mean about that? What's the problem?
Could we put anything like, that the businesses on South Main Street have to supply adequate parking?
And you're gonna see.
You're kinda screwing them up.
You're gonna see an autograph, because this is just how we get, you know, just wants to.
Hey, that's what they did on Tenny Mountain Highway.
Yeah, but it's common in every town, it's common in every downtown, it's different.
The zoning is different downtown versus Tenny Mountain Highway.
I understand.
You're still seeing the effects of the segue of 100% to automotive transportation.
Yeah.
From the railroads.
Absolutely.
The way you were having a good idea, all in all, there, you have the chance to, to get it talked about.
Is this a good idea?
To study it.
I'll wait until my survey.
It was shot down years ago because of the residents of Main Street, but now Main Street's turned all into college and rental, so you might have a chance at it now.
So how, how I would normally handle something like the highway garage or safety complex would be, here's a sentence with the background, and then here are some options for addressing the need, and ask.
I think with each.
They would support, so maybe, I mean, maybe that's something that.
There again.
I'm gonna have, I'm gonna have the board members go a little bit more through the, through the chair, please, so we can get through this. Go ahead, Tara.
Would it make sense for Bill to send me some wording to make C and D separate questions with an introductory sentence? And then here are some options for addressing the need, which one would you support? That's, I mean, they really were just five placeholders, but.
Yeah, and, you know, there could have been a little bit more talk between Bill and I, and you possibly, um, maybe we should meet between now, between this meeting, and the next time you come back, if we could find a time, I think that would help, too.
Yeah, I've got, I gotta be out of town, end of September, but.
Because I could see this going till tomorrow, this format.
This is the hardest one, it's our disturbance. We're gonna cross tab it.
Yeah.
A lot of the answers.
Yeah.
That's where it gets interesting.
So one is important is too important. How long they've been implemented, are we really gonna use that?
I think so, because Plymouth has changed.
Okay.
I think that quantifies the chronology of things.
It will tell you who's engaged in the survey, and if we just hear from long-term residents, and we don't hear from new folks, it just informs us, it's another cross tab.
And number three, I think we talked about at the last meeting, the idea that that comes at the last meeting, because we, you all were saying that a lot of people just pass the town, whether they're, you know, residents at hospital or students, or, you know, it's kind of a chance to see if there's any difference in how people feel about things based on whether they make their. We're gonna cross tab it.
Yeah.
A lot of the answers.
Yeah.
That's where it gets interesting.
So one is important is too important. How long they've been implemented, are we really gonna use that?
I think so, because Plymouth has changed.
Okay.
I think that quantifies the chronology of things.
It will tell you who's engaged in the survey, and if we just hear from long-term residents, and we don't hear from new folks, it just informs us, it's another cross tab.
And number three, I think we talked about at the last meeting, the idea that that comes at the last meeting, because we, you all were saying that a lot of people just pass the town, whether they're, you know, residents at hospital or students, or, you know, it's kind of a chance to see if there's any difference in how people feel about things based on whether they make their.